Good evening. I'd like to call this August meeting of the Bryan Board of Education to order. We'll start first with the pledge of flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see a full house tonight. I'm looking forward to our evening together. However, with that being said, I would like to actually request just a moment of silence. We lost a brave Bryan soul, as many have heard, in Brandon Kreischer. And I would like to offer our condolences to the family and do offer a moment of silence before we start with our meeting tonight. Thank you all. Okay, now moving on. First, we need to appoint our treasurer pro tem tonight is Mr. Robert Wanamaker. Appreciate you being here with us this evening. And I would need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Thank you, Tom. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Roll, please.
Scott?
Yes.
Cyndra?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on, you had an opportunity to see the July board minutes. With that being said, if no one saw any corrections that need to be made, I would like a motion to approve the July regular board meeting minutes, please. So moved. Thank you, Deb. Thank you, Scott. Let me do a roll.
Cyndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay, now, moving on. With the smile, and I'm not familiar with public participation. With that being said, tonight, we are going to start a new little feature that I am very much looking forward to in our board meetings. And that's going to be our student spotlight. Each month, we would like to feature a different program, accomplishments within our district that has to do with our students. So tonight, it's with great pleasure that we're going to hear from our Bryan, Ohio ambassadors of music. Excuse me, I'd like to ask the board members if we could move and spotlight our students.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Brandon Gordon. For those who don't know me, I'm the orchestra director here for Bryan City Schools. And I'm also one of the directors for the Ohio ambassadors of music. I've had the pleasure, the last two trips, which we go every other year, I've had the pleasure of being the orchestra director for the Ohio ambassadors of music. It's made up of students and band, orchestra, and choir throughout the state of Ohio. And they're recommended by their directors throughout the entire state. And then, we go through general meetings and such, and to go through the recruitment process. So on our even years, when we don't travel, we do the recruitment, the students, they raise the money to go on the trip. And then, once that's all said and done, and we get our rosters and everything, then we get together in the spring of the years that we're traveling, such as this year. And we start by meeting each other at Bulling Grin State University, where our other two directors are at, Dr. Bruce Moss, who's director of bands at BGSU, and Dr. Richard Schnippke, who's the director of choirs at BGSU. We have an all-day rehearsal, it's a big boot camp, it's a getting-to-know-you type of stage, and it prepares us for when we get into June, when we get out of school, we all meet in Columbus. And this year, we actually had our rehearsals, our big three-day boot camp at Hilliard Davidson High School in Columbus. And then, we put the big concert together with all the groups, and then, we have a week to pack. And we leave for a 16-day tour across Europe that starts in London, which you're going to hear about all of these, and they're all fantastic. We can keep you here till 10:30, talking about probably the first three countries on the trip. But we won't, we're going to cram it into hopefully less than 15 minutes. But we traveled from London, through the cliffs of Dover, and on a ferry into Paris, France, and Fontainebleau, where we had one of our performances. We had the pleasure of going up into Switzerland and spending some time in Crans Montana, which is a beautiful ski resort town. We also had trips to Montreux, which is where the castle of Chian is at, and big Freddie Mercury statue, which you'll see a picture of Freddie Mercury with his microphone. It's pretty darn epic. We also had a trip to Zermatt, where the Matterhorn is at, the Swiss Alps. From there, we had a trip down to Austria. We spent some time in this beautiful town called Seefeld, where they had these beautiful Belgian horses. We did a day trip to Venice, and then, we went up through Germany. We went to Dachau. We did a two-hour stop at Dachau to see one of the last concentration camps that were completely shut down, so they got to tour that. And then, we made our way up to Rothenburg, which is a beautiful, beautiful city that's surrounded by these beautiful stone walls, correct?
Indeed.
Indeed. And the actually really neat thing about it is where they filmed the movie Chitty Chitty Bang Bang. So, they do these night watchman tours, and it's just super cool. And they show all these different angles from the movies, and they also talk about the history of the town and things like that. We had performances along the way in each of our stops, which the kiddos here, the youth of America, as Dr. Moss would say. They'll talk about that, they'll talk about some of their experiences and such, but it's a very rewarding experience. And I think I can speak for these guys when I say that they made some lifelong memories, they made some great friends through this. But our student travelers here this evening are Gillian Drennan, Corinna McDougall, Annie King, Cara Bauer, Katie Seaman might be flying through that door here pretty shortly, so just be on the lookout. And then, Zach Pittman, who is over in Utah now, starting his freshman year at Utah State. He won't be with us this evening, but he was also one of the members on the trip. So without further ado, our student ambassadors.
All right, then I guess I'll start it off. My name, as he said, is Gillian Drennan, and I am a soprano and a flust. And so, on this trip, I was working with Dr. Moss and Dr. Schnippke. And if we could go to the next slide. So here is where we started it off, in Hilliard Davidson. This is when we were having our first boot camp and practice and everything. And I just remember talking to all the kids and making new friends. At first, we all thought, oh my word, this music is such a challenge, and we've been practicing, how are we going to get this ready, like, to perform for Europeans? But it definitely came together. And we started off in the very beautiful city of London, as we all know from pictures, unless you've actually gone there, which is good for you. This is a very historic city, and absolutely beautiful. I love architecture, so everything in London for me was just so beautiful. I love history. And it was interesting to see, down here is a picture of the changing of the guard down in the bottom corner. That happens periodically. It's just part of the grandeur of London. And then, up here is one of the London streets. And this picture down here is actually taken from the Eye of London, as some of you may know, it's the big Ferris wheel, you can't really miss it, that's why it's called the Eye of London. Anyway, yes, we can go to that slide. Over here is actually a picture of where we were able to perform. We performed on the lawn of Windsor Castle, which usually on a regular day, you would not be allowed on the grass, because it is the Queen's property and you cannot step on her grass. But she very graciously allowed us to play outside of her favorite castle. In fact, Buckingham Palace is not her favorite, it's Windsor. Down here is Westminster Abbey, which is where coronations and royal weddings take place. It's a very beautiful church. And over here is a statue of Prince Albert. He was not considered a king, because he was married to Queen Victoria. But this statue is very breathtaking, it's very beautiful. It actually showcases every continent. So we are actually down here, on the back left-hand side, we're, our statue is a woman riding a buffalo. So, yes, that's America.
And just to kind of piggyback off of this, this is also, this is in the same area where we were staying, which is in the Kensington area.
Yes.
Where Kensington Palace is at, where Princess Diana lived, actually up until her death. And then, right across from the Prince Albert statue is the Royal Albert Hall, where there are hundreds of performances throughout the year. The Beach Boys were just there, right when we were getting in, otherwise, I probably would have been in there that night, so. Anyways, onward.
Okay. So here, we can also see, this is the yard of Windsor Castle. She, the Queen has very beautiful gardens. And actually, in London, if you do not keep up the aesthetic, you could actually be fined or perhaps thrown in jail, because you are not keeping it clean and beautiful as the Queen would like it. But everyone in London actually has a huge respect for their Queen. They almost treat her like their own mother, most of the time. So, yes, it's very interesting to see that close of a respect for your leader. And so, here is, this is actually a picture of us traveling on the ferry from the White Cliffs of Dover over to France.
Which is like, what, about an hour and a half?
Yeah, somewhere around an hour, hour and a half. It's, yeah.
The kids spend most of their time standing in line to get Starbucks. The amount of time they get, it, we're in France, so.
Yeah.
Great way to kill time. But anyways, onward to Paris.
Okay, so, my name's Brandon, and I play the violin. So, actually, when we got to Paris, it was very quick. Usually, this is actually the first year that they had a performance in Paris, I think. Right?
Yeah.
Yes, this is the first year.
So, everything was like crammed together, like, it's one thing after the other, we went so many different places. One of the most famous places we went to is the Eiffel Tower, as you can see there. And actually, I'm sure many of you have heard of the Notre Dame catching on fire. We actually did get to see it, but we didn't get to go inside, because they're still repairing it. But afterwards, we got to go on a boat ride, like, around the place, and we actually had to see it for a little while. And that's a picture of us performing in one of the churches. On the day that we were actually performing, they were reaching like record-high temperatures, and we were all wearing these jackets, it was so hot. And there were so many people there, it was so much fun, it was so hot. So, next slide. This is where we took our group picture at.
This was, on the right is Fontainebleau, where our performance was at, and this was our entire group shot. And then, on the left is Monmarr, correct?
Monmarr.
Monmarr, yeah.
Actually, the Chateau de Fontainebleau is the house, or mansion, really, of Napoleon Bonaparte. This is where he lived during his time and reigned over France.
So we went there when we toured at first, and then after a while, we came back and took a group picture on the stairs, as you can see. And just right down on the street is where the band performed as well, so, that was fun. And there's just more pictures of us performing in the church and the Eiffel Tower, and that's on the boat right on the right, as we were circling around Paris.
All right, so, the next stop we went to was Switzerland, and we stayed in a place called Crans Montana. From Paris to Switzerland, it's probably like five, okay?
Five, yeah.
Yeah. It was a long ride.
On our bus. Once we got there, the place we were staying at was like, I don't know, how long did it take to get up there?
I'm not sure. We were in the mountains for a little while.
To get to our hotels, our coaches, really, had to go up a mountain. And there aren't always side rails on the roads, so you're looking straight down the mountain when you're driving up. So, yes, trust is a big, it's a big factor.
They're really skinny when you move, too.
Yes.
Very narrow, yeah.
Switzerland was probably by far my favorite place that we went to. I don't know about you guys, but it was just so beautiful to see all the mountains and just go to be able to see the Matterhorn, and when we went to Lake Geneva, that was probably the prettiest thing that I think I've ever seen in my entire life. The picture is actually a sign from a little pond that they have, it's of the town that they light up at night. And then, we have Mr. Gordon in the middle. And, do you guys remember the castle?
Is that the castle of Chian?
Yeah. All right, so, we have a picture of Gillian in the mountains. Then, there's a picture of the mountains from the ski lift. And one of our really good friends, Lo Brothers.
That was after we were done performing, when all the people were screaming and on fire.
And the folks in this town are so hospitable, they treat you like you're a part of their family. They welcome you, and they have all these amenities that they gave us this year. You could go swimming for free, you could go paddleboard.
Paddleboarding.
Yeah, that thing, yeah. And there was the ski lift, all this stuff was all-inclusive that they had thrown in, so it was just like heaven in the mountains. It was just, such a wonderful time.
Here we have a picture, these are actually some of my friends that I made. On the left is me and my friend Daisy, and on the very right is me and my friend Jack. And in the middle, you have a picture, we actually got a picture of a rainbow over a mountain. And that was cool.
Right outside our hotel.
Yeah, it was right outside our hotel.
At one point, it was a double rainbow, but you just missed that, so. Anywho.
Okay, here we have a picture of more of the mountains, and then our group picture of everybody from Bryan, down at the dinner table, I think, is that more Bryan people?
Yeah.
Us in here, yeah.
There's more Bryan people, just our dinner group that we all made different friends of, and then Gillian and Corinna in the sky lift.
Ah, there's Freddie Mercury on the left.
So here we get to Lake Geneva, so you have Freddie Mercury right over, like, adjacent to the lake. And then, the picture on the top in the middle is actually of the mountains and the lake. And then, that's another picture of one of the castles that we got to view when we were on our ride.
Okay, so this is Seefeld and Innsbruck, which we both visited in Austria. And both cities are very quaint, and also very expensive. But, so, when we went to Seefeld, the middle picture here, this is a picture from the inside of, it's called the White Church. And basically, it kind of sits on a little hill, and it used to be surrounded by a lake, but that was 100 years ago. But it is very beautiful inside, it's very small, but it also has a very good area to sing in, which I did on my own. We didn't all sing there, but I did on my own. Over here, that statue is a historic statue in Austria, it says, "Vergat Kaiser und Vaterland", which of course is for God, Kaiser, and Fatherland. So as we can see, the Austrians also have a great respect for their country. And over here, this, a picture on the far, well, right for you, is from Swarovski in Innsbruck, which is a very popular place to go for all of the tourists. There they sell Austrian crystal. And this is a whole gown made out of Austrian crystal. It's very beautiful there, they, so many sparkling things. It's very tempting when you go in, but when you see the price, then you realize that you can't always afford everything.
Some of us would need to take out a roll?
Yes, indeed. Here's a picture of us performing at the church in Seefeld. And it's actually right in the middle of the city. It's really easy to navigate the city, because it's kind of smaller, but everything is in a big circle, and the church is right in the middle, which is kind of how historic cities were, because if anything was wrong, you would always go to the church, and of course, the church was a big factor in people's lives. And so, here, this church is very historic, actually, it was very, very old, but there is a legend of this church that a man, there was this very haughty man who came in to the priest, and back then, which it might be now, I'm a Baptist, so I don't really know, but the priest would always take the first bite of the bread in communion. And this man comes in, and he's very haughty, and he says, "I deserve the first bite of bread." So he comes and he puts, right when he puts the bread to his lips, he starts sinking into the floor, and then he grabs onto the altar, which is all right behind all of us, and his hand starts sinking into the stone of the altar. And right when the priest takes the bread off his lips, then he is able to stand again. So, yes, we were able to walk up to the altar and put our hand on the prayer and see where his feet would have sunk into the floor. And it's a very interesting legend, but then again, Austrians and Germans have a lot of legends to tell.
Venice.
Venice, okay. So, we kind of spent half of our time, when we went to Austria, we spent half of our time in Austria, half of our time in Venice. One of the days was in Venice. And here, we can see the view of the rivers in Venice, of course, we all know that their streets are made of water. So up on top, we can see that they need to plant their gardens on their roofs, because they don't have anywhere else to plant them. And over here is St. Mark's Church, which we performed in. And actually, St. Mark's Church is very, very, very strict, even though, of course, Venice can reach up to temperatures of like 100 and whatnot, and it definitely was that hot when we were there. You still have to cover your shoulders and your knees when you go in, or else they will not allow you to go in. They can give you pieces of cloth that you can wear, but that will cost you money. So, we performed in there, and the picture actually that was in the middle, Antonio Vivaldi, many good musicians know of his works, he was one of the early Baroque composers, and he was actually born in Venice.
This is a shot outside of his church?
Yes. So here are more views from the Venetian waters. Up here is the Bridge of Sais, and this bridge also has a legend of its own. When the prisoners were being brought to jail, they would be brought over the Bridge of Sais, and that would be their last sigh, knowing that they would never have freedom again. Here are more views of the Venetian streets and Venetian waters. And we also saw a glass blowing.
Exhibit.
Exhibit, yeah. And this, basically, a family passes down their works of Venetian glass blowing, and if anyone knows about Venetian glass, it's probably just about the most expensive glass works sold today. The red color is actually the most expensive, but the families pass their works down in their trade, so these people are professionals. So, yes.
And our final stop in this amazing journey that we've taken was Rothenburg, Germany. And the picture on your far-left-hand side, I believe was the church we played in, I don't recognize the same glass, no. But, the churches over there compared to America are huge on the inside, they're gorgeous, and they definitely pay attention to the architecture. And, yeah, it was a small town, it was still really easy to get lost, we did that a couple times, but.
And then, these are some shots from Dachau, this was actually before we got to Rothenburg.
Yeah, we went to Dachau before we arrived in Rothenburg for the night, and this was definitely a very eye-opening experience. Generally, kids our age, if you're in history class, they make jokes about this stuff. I was lucky to hear two words out of one person's mouth the entire time. Really, you spent your time reading quotes from the people that were stuck there and rode into the walls, and really, just even walking through where they stayed to sleep, it was almost like you could still feel them there, like, their presence was still felt.
And though it was very solemn, I think, for being musicians on this trip, we were really able to think and see how the power of forgiveness works, and how resilience should be put into play when we go through hard times. And you can always bounce back from something.
This is outside the Christmas store.
Yeah, it was.
Big statue of the Nutcracker, so we, a group of my friends and I decided to take a picture outside of it. They're very big on Christmas over there, there's like eight stores on one road.
They're really large.
Yeah. So, Rothenburg was definitely a different experience. We played, the picture on your far-left is actually where the band performed during, I think it was 2 o'clock was our performance?
Yes.
Their performance, yes.
2:03, because at 2 o'clock, the cuckoo portion of the tower, it comes out, and there's these two menacing-looking people, and they have, they exchange words, more or less we'll say. And so, they have to go through the whole motion, and does the ringing and all that, and as soon as they close, the performance takes place. But we had the performance right out here at the marketplace, and as soon as it was done, we all had to book it down the street to the church, because we had our performance right afterwards. And it was like the day before we came home.
Left, yeah.
Yeah, we were playing right up until the very end, and then we kind of got together later that night, and we said our goodbyes, and everybody, there was six different flights that went back to the States, and so, everybody went their separate ways, so.
We actually ended up waking up around 3:00 in the morning, just to wait.
The jet lag was a bit of a pain.
The picture on your far-right was taken, as Mr. Gordon said, there was a night watch tour that you could have taken, and if you ever visit Rothenburg, I highly recommend going, he's really funny. But this view right here, you're looking at, is the only portion that is not surrounded by a stone wall, it's actually up on a cliff. Rothenburg, and this part of Germany in general, was actually part of the original Roman Empire, and that's why the stone walls are grounded, it was for protection. And if there wasn't walls, it was built up in higher elevation to protect you from your enemies.
Excellent job, guys.
Great job.
Well, thank you all for letting us come in to speak this evening, and hopefully, we were able to give you guys some ideas on your future, you know, trips, or something to cross off your bucket list, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, how about that? I should probably, I just learned how to use this today, so. There we go, you're very welcome.
Looked like a fabulous trip, for some of our students, a great opportunity for them to go and take advantage. Okay, so, boy, that's going to be tough to beat. After communications, we're moving on to Board of Recommendation of Kevin Schaefer as our CFO. That will be effective as of September 1st, 2019. He's gone through a lot of education, a lot of classes, and help to put you into that position, so we look forward to it being official on September 1st, our September meeting.
We do need to move in a second.
I will take a motion to approve Kevin Schaefer as our CFO. Thank you. Tom, second?
Second.
Thank you. Mike, roll, please, Mr. Wanamaker.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cyndra?
Yes.
Thank you. Move on to our Treasurers' Report. That will be presented.
With the board's permission, I will go ahead and give the Treasurer's Report. We'll begin with cash reconciliation. At Farmers and Merchants State Bank, we have $2,318,775.86, with adjusting items of Star Ohio, $925,615.47. UBS Financial, $4,314,729.71. State Bank, $6,383,427.40. Star Ohio Plus, $2,469,676.77. Total investment is $14,093,449.35. Total investment is fourteen million, ninety-three thousand, four hundred forty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. Petty cash and change funds amount to seven thousand, four hundred dollars for a total fund balance of sixteen million, three hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. Additionally, there are several financial reports as Exhibit B, unless the board has any questions on those reports. Exhibit C are proposed amended temporary appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and twenty. Uh we will have permanent appropriations for your approval next month. Uh there's just some slight changes there. Tuition rates for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year as set by the Ohio Department of Education for in-state students, six thousand, three hundred seventy-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. And for out-of-state students, ten thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. Our purchasing consortium, Meta, has asked for the board to approve a resolution regarding bus bids. We do not, at this point, intend to purchase any new buses this year. But um as part of their bidding process, they've asked all of the members of the consortium to pass that resolution. And so we ask that be included in the motion to approve these recommendations. Uh last year, the board approved the Student Activity Group, the Golden Bears Running Club. And uh this year, they wish to uh collect some registration fees in order to provide for T-shirts and uh awards for the students. And to to facilitate that, we asked the board's permission to establish a new fund, uh three hundred, nine eighty-three A for that purpose. Exhibit E has the athletic pay rate scheduled for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year uh for the various athletic workers, which will be up for the board's approval uh later. We have a few then-and-now certificates that we need to address. Uh first is O A E P for one hundred dollars, Toledo Public School for seven hundred dollars, Defiance County Family and Children's First Council for four dollars and fifty cents, and Caitlin Burnett, thirty-eight dollars and seventy cents. Finally, we want to thank the following people for their donations. Thomas and Susan Herman, five hundred dollars for the golf team. The Bryan Area Foundation for the Orchestra, six thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. The Bryan Rotary Foundation for Bryan City Schools Kindergarten Books, one thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. And school supplies, gift cards, and also we have received two hundred and seventy-nine dollars from the Bryan Police Department in probation for Bryan Elementary School.
Good, nice full list, thank you, Kevin. Are there any questions? The treasurer's report. If not, if not, I will take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Deb. In a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Roll please.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Syndrome?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to old business, the tennis courts.
Yes, so um unfortunately, we're kind of in the same position we were a month ago. The courts are um and have been, the pre-work is done. We're waiting on the weather to cooperate a little bit so that we can pour the first layer of asphalt. And that was scheduled for today. However, given the amount of rain that the area had over the weekend, um we're gonna wait a little bit and hopefully by the end of this week, we should see. So we were a little bit ahead of schedule as we reported last month, so we're not um having anxious moments yet. Uh our goal is still to be able to play on the courts at some point this season, so that is still our goal.
New business.
Okay, under superintendent recommendations is Exhibit F. You have the Wood County Juvenile Detention Center Agreement. This is an annual agreement that we sign in the necessity that we have any students that are placed in that center. We need to continue their education. Under Exhibit G, you have approval of the two thousand and nineteen, twenty YMCA Transportation Service Contract. This is the second year for this type contract where we provide busing for the students who go to the YMCA daycare. Um we charge them just our mileage rate and costs. Uh we do not necessarily make money off of this contract. Um and they uh we transport their students on a daily basis, uh in the morning, at noon, and in the afternoon. And then on your addendum, which I shared with you on a piece of paper at your seat, Exhibit I is an MOU with a renewed mind. As you remember, also last year, a renewed mind was able to provide a school-based mental health therapist for students. And this year, um we are adding another part-time, school-based, mental health therapist. So we'll have part-time person, I think, three days a week at the high school and then also at the elementary. Are there any questions on those recommendations? Then we'll move on to personnel. We have um finishing up some new hires. Again, I'm gonna bounce back and forth between the regular agenda and the addendum. We'll start with new hire of classified staff. Jordana Walker is a pre-K five, one-on-two aide, um five point seven five hours per day, effective August fourteenth. Jill Pittman at our six-to-twelve building, a one-on-one aide, eight hours per day pending her certification, effective August twenty-eighth. Amanda Carlin, a new bus driver. She's listed on both, but that's just because on the addendum, we specified three point five hours per day, zero years' experience, effective August fifteenth. Linda Vlelu, six-to-twelve, a five hours per day pending certification, effective August nineteenth. Um we'd like to have also on the addendum supplemental contract for the nineteen, twenty school year of co-weight room coordinator, Grant Redhead. And then back on the original agenda, a one-year limited teaching contract for this school year for Kathy Detweiler. Kathy is coming to assist us with a last-minute resignation um as kindergarten intervention. And we will place her at the bachelor's level with ten years' experience. We have an involuntary transfer of Tammy Elliott to a prepaid-of-five aide, eight hours a day. Transfer of certified staff for this school year, Tracy Lambersen moved to the open middle school ELA position. Tina Del Fabro then moved to Tracy Lambersen's fourth grade position. And Carrie Wilhelm then moved to Tina's kindergarten position. Transfer of classified staff, we have Jacob Robb to third shift custodian, effective August twelfth. This is uh to address, you know, just the use of our building. And Mr. Ruffer, our maintenance supervisor, felt that it was more beneficial and more effective to have another third shift. Um and Jacob was um nice enough to be able to volunteer for that move. So we thank Jacob for being willing to do that. Sherry Robinson as preschool one-on-two aide, four point two five hours Tuesdays through Fridays, effective August fourteenth. Classified personnel, we did a a list of aides last month, but we had a few um just tweaks. So Kathy Lambersen, a one-on-two aide at seven hours per day, and Lisa Dooley, health aide at five point seven five hours per day. We also have a couple of changes with Jonell Holmes, was reduced from eight to seven hours per day. Aubrey Dixon had to be adjusted to seven point seven five hours per day. And Michelle Missler, five point seven five hours per day, per day, all effective August fourteenth. Two additional supplemental contracts, junior high cross-country coach, Alicia Bowers, at ten percent. And we had an extremely large group of young men interested in boys soccer, enough for another team. And so Zachary Roller, um as per the MOU that we signed a year ago, will be hired as assistant boys soccer coach at thirteen percent. Our bus and van drivers, this, these are their days and hours for the nineteen, twenty school year. Dee Collins, we approved Dee last month, um but Kevin and I found that she, with the back-to-school needs, um actually had to work more than ten hours a week, which is what we approved a month ago. So we're asking to um approve Dee for up to fifty hours per month. That'll give her and us a little bit more flexibility when she has some peak moments. And that's for just August and then forty hours per month from September first until July thirty-first. Approval of the nineteen, twenty certified and classified substitutes, and you see the list there. And then Exhibit H, we have a list of the people who have volunteered um for our fall athletic department jobs, including ticket takers, uh coverages, scoreboards, announcers, and those are listed um on Exhibit H. Kevin mentioned earlier the Bryan Elementary Golden Bear Running Club. We have, these are all staff members who are willing to volunteer to help make that program a success. Our mentor teachers for the nineteen, twenty school year, again, as a reminder, our first-year teachers and our second-year teachers. We hire mentors to help them transition either to Bryan or into teaching in general. Salary schedule placement, we had teachers that went back to school over the summer. So Chris Hall and Ceez and Sanders are moving to the master's plus twenty salary schedule, effective August fourteenth. We had two resignations this month. Renee Myers is a preschool one-on-one aide, effective August seventh. Doug Jacobs is a bus driver, effective August fourth. And Linda Watson in our food service department, effective August twelfth. Are there any questions regarding those recommendations?
Quite a list.
Quite a list this month.
If not, I'll take a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations.
So moved.
Can you, Scott? Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Roll, please.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Syndrome?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then finally, under recommendations, this is coming down from ODE. Uh every two years, as a board, we must take a look at policy twenty-four thirteen, which is our career advising policy. And I shared that with all of you. Um it just outlines from grades six through twelve what we do to um educate our students about the career opportunities that lie before them, um give them experience in those opportunities. It outlines our internship program, some of our new career pathways. There are no changes recommended at this time, uh but we do need just to acknowledge, for a better word, that we have um looked at that policy and reviewed it uh for this year. So are there any questions on that?
If not, I'll take a motion to um approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Tom. Second, please.
Second.
And Scott. Scott, thank you. Roll, please.
Scott?
Yes.
Syndrome?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under points of information, um I'm going to hold off on any finance updates. I still are, we're still kind of waiting for the briefs on the budget, uh so we have no new information there. But we have a lot to celebrate tonight. Um our board meeting dates are listed, um including our upcoming meeting in Columbus in November for the Capitol Conference. Uh but we do have our administrators back and we have some of our new staff members that are here. So we're going to let our new athletic director start. And we'll have you stand on kind of right over here and then Mr. Bassett will go and then we'll bring in our our new staff with Mark and Karen.
Okay, thank you. I was asked to give a report on dual sports for the past three years and the research that I found. In two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, we had eleven students that took part in our dual sports programs. Two students in the fall and nine in the spring. There was four boys and seven girls. The breakdown goes as follows. We had one boy, there was a senior, the the primary uh football and soccer. A girl, there was a sophomore in cross-country soccer. A boy, there was a senior in tennis and baseball. Another one in tennis and track. And then we had a freshman in 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 track and tennis. The the first one I've listed is the primary sport is their secondary sport. Then we had five softball players that it was their primary and then track was their secondary. And then we had one girl that was in track as a primary and then softball was her secondary. So in seventeen, eighteen, the first year that we did it, there were eleven total. Last year, there were eight total, five in the fall, three in the spring. That breakdown is five boys and three girls. And some of the sports that they did primarily was soccer football, soccer cross-country, football golf, cross-country soccer. So as you can see, there it it's been a wide array of of different uh different different sports. None of the winter, it's just really conducive in the winter. This year so far, I've met with four in the fall. Four student athletes, their parents and their head coaches, three boys and one girl, two seniors, one sophomore and one freshman. We have a senior boy, the primary sport is soccer with a secondary cross-country. We have a senior girl with her primary sport is cross-country, then her secondary is soccer. We have a sophomore boy, soccer primary, golf secondary. And a freshman boy, cross-country primary and soccer is his uh is his secondary. As you can, as you can see, it it it's been a very successful program the last three years. Out of the twenty-four, out of the, out of the twenty-three that we've had, that have gone all the way through, twenty-one out of the twenty-three have finished the seasons. We had two that that did not finish, it was their choice, nothing administratively. Their combined grade point average for the twenty-three is three point seven three. So obviously, that it's attracting kids that that are on the higher-end academically. Um fall sports are definitely underway right now. Golf and tennis are under their their second full week of of competition. Boys soccer opened up Saturday night against Paul Dean. Volleyball and girls soccer will open up tomorrow night. Cross-country this coming Saturday at Defiance Football. We'll have our last group each Friday night against Paul Dean. That's also tonight, we're gonna, we'll have our meet the teams and also a state recognition for the spring. This past Friday night, we we had a meet the band night with new band director Stephanie DePauw. And they did a great job out there introducing her and her uh her program to the community. And we also have our cheerleaders uh that are that are very active with things that are going on right now as well. That is my report. If you have any questions, I'll take it with this out.
Any questions? Any buddy director? Okay, thank you for your question, Pastor Bassett.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna start off probably, you're gonna hear the same thing from Mark and Karen, but what a great start to the year. I mean, I had a, probably last night, a four-years education, I don't remember like a smoother start. They didn't tell you different in the building, but I walked through the building, it just flowed. Kids were like they're back in a routine, smiling face. It's just great to see that um, of course, we're back to schools, we must talk about testing um right away. Um you know, we have the kindergarten readiness assessment for our kindergarters. And we also have to test our preschoolers right away. We test them in the fall and the spring with our um early literacy assessment. So we um, those tests are ready to go, we'll give them a couple of weeks and teachers will start going through those tests. And it's kind of cumbersome because you can't test your kindergarters and of our group settings, it's more individual-based. So it takes a little bit to get through them. We have that ready. Also, bring your attention, um had the opportunity this summer to do some refresher training. We have a non-violent crisis intervention team that I don't think anybody ever talks about. Um but what a great group of individuals that we have. Uh maybe in your crisis situation, handling what's happening with the student, they they're the team that rushes in and takes control and calms the situation and just really neat individuals and glad I had the opportunity to work with them. Um we'll work through some scenarios and new refresher training. We're looking for some new people too, um get them trained. It becomes burdensome sometimes, they get burned out a little bit, um for that. But just what a great resource we have, we need to bring in individuals that are going to go and and really calm the situation down.
That they're just gonna ask you, they're in each building?
They're in each building. Yeah, we have a bigger building than the elementary. That's where we see more need.
Right.
With the popular, you know, population. Uh but we do have some certified, some trained individuals at the high schools as well.
That's great.
Thanks a lot.
Any other questions?
Sir, Mr. Bassett?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna stand right up here.
Yeah.
Well, I'll give my report. Good evening, um I wanted to make sure, and I I don't know what was said when I was out in the hallway, so I apologize. Um but I did wanna make sure that we um gave a, gave a But I did wanna make sure that we gave a shout-out to our custodians. Our buildings look amazing, they worked super hard this summer. Our bulletin boards that the teachers did. Everyone worked really, really hard in getting our building ready, so thank you. Today was the first day that we had first grade through fifth grade and all of our kindergarten. Tomorrow will be the official day that we start everyone, including preschool. So arrival has gone very smooth, dismissal has gone very smooth. So we appreciate all of our parents. We did add a few changes to our arrival and dismissal, so we appreciate them being patient with us as we continue to work and to work out with the kids. Our school-wide PDIS kickoff is tomorrow at 1:15. All of the students will be receiving a PDIS shirt. Last year, they were yellow, this year they are gray, so we're super excited for that kickoff. This kickoff is where our students continue to learn about our expectations, be respectful, be responsible, be safe, and we make it fun for them. We do ask that our parents, when coming into our building, they may be asked to show an ID. If the secretaries aren't familiar with them, they will ask for a parent to show their ID. That's not to, anything against the parent, it just means that we're trying to be proactive and be safe. Another reminder, we are starting trimesters this year at Bryan Elementary. We are a standards-based grading school, so we thought 60 days, as opposed to the 45 days, gives more time for teaching, assessing, and reteaching. Information on us changing to trimesters was sent out at the end of last year and at the beginning of this year. Our teachers will have some PD coming up on Letterland Phonics. That is set for August 28 and 29. And also, they will have PD in a new math curriculum called I-Ready on September 5. So with that, I'd like to introduce Amy Wolf. She is a fourth grade intervention specialist joining us this year. So, welcome, Amy. Yes, there we go, there, there's Candy Schaefer. Yep, stand up. She is one of our paraprofessionals joining us this year as well, so welcome Candy.
Okay, Mr. Ray.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Cox.
Drake Scott.
Come on up here.
Well, like Mrs. Cox said, we have had an outstanding start to the school year. It's been absolutely phenomenal, wonderful to see all the faces coming in with the students, but I have to give credit where credit is due. Our custodial staff, first of all, kicking off the school year with the buildings looking brand new. They don't look any different than they did four years ago. So, major thank you to them and all of their hard work, and also our staff too. They've been outstanding in welcoming the students and being prepared, and just seeing a lot of exciting things happening in the halls. So, we're really excited for that. We did have a recent tragedy, as we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, but there's also a large thank you to Diana and to Mayor Schley for helping bring the community together, to more appropriately, and to honor him and his sacrifice for us. And that was a very unfortunate situation, but also very humbling to watch the respect and the honor fall on that, so. We also, at our building, we have lots of new staff, but only three were able to make it today, so I'll introduce them. We have Danielle McQuillan, who's teaching middle school intervention. Tyler Davy, again, middle school intervention. And Stephanie DePaul, she's our new band director for grades 5 through 12. We welcome them with us tonight.
Kevin, would you like to introduce your new office employee?
Yes, we also have, go ahead and stand up, Caleb. This is Caleb Brown, our new payroll and benefits specialist. She joined us last month, on the 27th.
Thank you, glad to be here.
Are there any questions, Mr. Ray?
Wonderful that you've joined us, the new staff that is here. We welcome you as well, on behalf of the board, and wish you all the best when you're moving forward here. With that being said, we do, we will have a reason for executive session under A, the Appointment, Employment, Dismissal, Discipline Promotion, Demotion, Compensation of Employee, and also D, Pre-Pair and Conducting Reviewing Negotiations, Bargaining Session with Employees. I do not expect any actions from our executive session. After we go through motioning to do that, I would like to offer you all to stay, and we'll have a little reception for our new employees and everyone that's here, and then we will get back to our executive session portion of our meeting tonight. So with that being said, I'll take a motion, please, amongst the board, to move the executive session.
Scott? Thanks, Deb.
Second.
And Scott? If you could do a roll, please.
Yes, Sandra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Scott?
Yes.
All right, good. And then we also want to get a picture of new staff that are here, so we can put that out in social media. So, and I think our press would probably like that as well. So we'll do that, and we'll enjoy the cookies in the hallway where there's a little bit more room. So feel free to join us out there. Thank you all.